Good evening.
Evening.
It is now six oh one on Tuesday, October twenty first, two thousand twenty five. I'd like to call a regular session county council meeting to order. Madam Clerk, can you take the roll, please?
Madam Chair, I would like to make a note that Councilwoman Baron has changed her name to Cooper. So moving forward, we will be addressing her as Councilwoman Cooper.
Ode it.
Brenham?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Little? Livingston? Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Cooper?
Yes.
Aline?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Before we move into our invocation tonight, I wanted to start off our meeting with a moment of silence as we acknowledge the recent passing of Mayor Al Kuhn, the mayor of Chapeen, South Carolina, a long lifetime resident of Chapeen, South Carolina, and has been a faithful community servant to our community in the Chapeen area. And he- Thank you. You will please keep his family in your thoughts and prayers. Now I'll turn it over to Councilwoman Aline for our invocation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Here tonight to deliver the invocation is Kelvin Briggs. He is the minister of the Long Creek Church of Christ where I worship. Brother Briggs, if you will step to the podium, please, and lead us in a word of prayer.
Let us bow. Eternate God, our Father, we come to you in this moment, Father God, as the services of you are prepared to embark upon the business of our community. Father God, we look to you and turn to you, Father God, with a sense of gratitude, Father God, for the service here. And Father, we pray that you allow them to conduct this meeting on this evening with a spirit of wisdom, Father God, and a opportunity to serve your people yet once again, Father God. And we pray that each and every one of them is ever mindful that this is a time to serve, a call that is greater than each and every one of them, even the collective body, Father God. And we look to you and pray that you allow them to operate with a sense of love, love of self, one another, and love of their community, Father God. We pray that they have time to reflect upon the joyous occasion that they have to serve your people, Father God. We pray that they're able to operate with a sense of unity, oneness, and togetherness, Father God. But most of all, we pray that this meeting and all their endeavors are done, Father God, to bring about improvement in our communities, our homes, our lives, and that they operate as a team, cherishing every opportunity to collectively commune with your Spirit descended upon them, to guide, lead, and direct them. In the most precious and holy name of Jesus Christ, we pray. Let us all say, amen.
Next, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance. If you will stand, please.
Item four is presentation of resolutions. We have four A, a resolution recognizing the University of South Carolina Equestrian Team on their twenty twenty five Southeastern Conference Championship win. Four B, a resolution recognizing October as Community Planning Month. And four C, a resolution recognizing November second through eighth, two thousand twenty five, as Columbia Fashion Week. I entertain a motion.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Second.
Motion is second. Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Livingston? Teresa? Weaver?
Yes.
Cooper?
Yes.
Aline?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
I share Pugh, you're recognized.
Thank you, ma'am. We will be delivering the resolution to the team at the campus at the University of South Carolina. I just want to take this time to say, we do a lot of great things in District Two. We have multiple state championships when it comes from both of our high schools. We also have the biggest economic development project in the state of South Carolina's history, and now we can add some SCC championship sauce to District Two. That's why we call it the Mighty District Two. So, that's all I got, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you. I share Pugh. Next is a resolution recognizing October as Community Planning Month. Councilwoman English?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Recognizing Community Planning Month, whereas change is constant and affects all cities, towns, suburbs, counties, boroughs, townships, rural areas, and other places, and whereas community planning and plans can help manage the change in a way that provides better choices for how people work and live, and whereas community planning provides an opportunity for all residents to be meaningfully involved in making choices that determine the future of their community, and whereas the full benefits of planning require public officials and citizens who understand, support, and demand excellence in planning and plan implementation, and whereas the month of October is designated as National Community Planning Month throughout the United States of America and its territories, and whereas the American Planning Association and its professional institute, the American Institute of Certified Planners endorse National Community Planning Month as an opportunity to highlight the contributions that sound planning and plan implementation make to the quality of our settlements and environments, and whereas the celebration of National Community Planning Month gives us opportunity to publicly recognize the participation and dedication of the members of planning commissioners and other citizen planners who have contributed their time and expertise to the improvement of Richland County and South Carolina, and whereas we recognize many valuable contributions made by professional community and regional planners of Richland County Government in Richland County, Columbia, South Carolina, and extend our heartfelt thanks for the continued commitment to public service by those professionals. And now therefore be it resolved that Richland County Council members Jason Branham, Derek Pugh, Tyra Little, Paul Livingston, Allison Teresa, Don Weaver, Gretchen D. Cooper, Tish Dozier Aline, Jessica Mackey, Cheryl English, and Shaquise Newton recognize the Richland County Planning Department and its employees and proclaim the month of October, two thousand twenty five, as a Community Planning Month in Richland County, South Carolina, in conjunction with the celebration of National Community Planning Month.
Who do we have from staff that'll be speaking on Community Planning Month? Dr. William, you're moving kind of slow. You didn't want to speak tonight? Okay, you're recognized.
I also want to recognize our neighborhood planner, Ms. Essence Holmes. She's worked really hard with the rest of our planning staff to put together our National Planning Month Conference that we had this past Saturday. We had a great turnout at the Columbia Museum of Art. We also have our monthly speed training events with the neighborhoods in Richland County, as well as all of the hard work staff has put in updating the county's comprehensive plan as well. And so, just want to recognize our staff for the hard work they've put in and to thank county council for taking the time to do this resolution to help recognize the hard work of our staff.
Thank you. Next is a resolution recognizing November second through eighth, two thousand twenty five, as Columbia Fashion Week. Yes, we'll take a picture of everybody once we get done. Don't leave. Whereas for over fifteen years, Columbia Fashion Week has enriched the cultural fabric of Richland County by providing an inclusive and dynamic platform for designers, stylists, models, photographers, and creative entrepreneurs to share their artistry, strengthen community connections, and elevate Columbia's creative voice. Through its nonprofit division, the COLA FW Alliance, the organization has been instrumental in nurturing local talent by offering mentorship, training, and professional resources that empower emerging creatives to build sustainable careers and lasting brands, demonstrating that the fashion industry can thrive right here in Richland County. Columbia Fashion Week's partnerships with Richland County, One Columbia for Arts and Culture, Experience Columbia, South Carolina, and the City of Columbia exemplify a shared mission to strengthen our community's creative ecosystem through collaboration, access, and opportunity, making the arts and fashion industries more inclusive, connected, and economically viable for all residents. This year, Columbia Fashion Week continues to elevate Richland County's profile as a center for creativity and opportunity by welcoming three of the nation's largest talent agencies to scout local models and creatives, affirming that sustainable impactful fashion careers can begin and flourish within our community. Through its ongoing partnership with Goodwill Industries of Upstate Midlands, South Carolina, Columbia Fashion Week promotes sustainability and workforce development by connecting the fashion industry with Goodwill's mission-driven programs in job training, skill building, and beyond, as the vital intersection between creativity, opportunity, and community growth. Now therefore be it resolved that Richland County Council members Jason Branham, Derek Pugh, Tyra Little, Paul Livingston, Allison Teresa, Don Weaver, Gretchen Cooper, Tish Dozier Aline, Jessica Mackey, Cheryl English, and Shaquise Newton proudly recognize Columbia Fashion Week, November second through eighth, two thousand twenty five, and commend its organizers, partners, and participants for their ongoing dedication to enhancing the cultural and creative landscape for our county while advancing the role of fashion and building a stronger, more connected, and economically vibrant community. Thank you. We have representatives here from Columbia Fashion Week who'd like to say a few words.
Hi, everyone. My name is Juliette Muller. I am the CEO of Columbia Fashion Week, and I have my chief marketing officer, Derain Gignard, behind me. I would like to thank you guys so much, Richland County Council, for this incredible recognition. On behalf of the entire Columbia Fashion Week team and our nonprofit division, the COLA FW Alliance, I am deeply honored to accept this proclamation. For over fifteen years, our mission has been to create opportunity, to show that fashion, creativity, commerce, and entrepreneurship can thrive right here in Richland County. Yes, entrepreneurship, Columbia Fashion Week is more than just a runway. It's about supporting the retail and fashion industry right in our county, supporting designers, boutiques, and businesses alike. We are dedicated to foster success. What began as a local showcase has grown into a movement, one that connects designers, models, stylists, and creative entrepreneurs from every background. Together, we're building a stronger creative economy, supporting sustainability, and giving a platform to voices that deserve to be seen and celebrated. This recognition from the county affirms that we've always believed that when community, creativity, and collaboration come together, there's no limit to what we can achieve. So how can you support, besides tickets and attending our events in the most fashionable way, of course? Tell a friend, bring a friend, and just continue to spread awareness about Columbia Fashion Week and our platform. But we need continued community support far beyond the runway. If you're a business or brand, we'd love to connect, to partner with you, to further discuss how can we bridge the gap between our creatives and what Columbia needs. So thank you to all of our current partners, supporters, and the incredible creatives who continue to make Columbia Fashion Week what it is. We're proud to represent the talent, innovation, and heart of Richland County, and we look forward to continuing to grow, inspire, and build together with you guys. Thank you.
All right. We, colleagues, will move over to the seal unless anyone has anything they wanted to say. All right. Right. Next, we have item five, approval of minutes from our regular session on October seventh, two thousand twenty five. I'll entertain a motion.
Moved to approve?
Second.
Motion is second for approval. Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Cooper?
Yes.
Aline?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next is adoption of agenda. Administrator Brown, do you have any additions, deletions?
No recommended changes, Madam Chair.
Attorney Wright?
No recommended changes. I believe the clerk has-
I'm sorry, Madam Clerk.
Yes, Madam Chair. We do have an item that we request to be updated so that it will reflect the agenda packet. If you look on item number nineteen F one, under H tags for District Ten, Kingsville Foundation should be thirty thousand dollars instead of twenty, and that is reflected on the packet on page three hundred and thirty. So I will request to amend the agenda to be able to reflect the correct amount, which should be thirty thousand dollars. Oh, moved.
Yes, but I just want to make sure no one else had any other additions, deletions, changes to the agenda. All right, so we have Councilwoman English has made a motion to approve with the recommended change.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Cooper?
Yes.
Aline?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Item seven, report of the attorney for executive session. Attorney Wright, you're recognized.
Yes, Madam Chair. We have four items for executive session. Seven A, legal update Rogers versus Richland County Auditor pursuant to thirty dash four dash seventy eight two. Seven B, two thousand twenty five county administrative evaluation pursuant to thirty dash four dash seventy eight one. Seven C, Richland Library property acquisition, nine zero one nine Garner's Ferry Road pursuant to thirty dash four dash seventy eight two. And seven D, SEDES consent agreement regarding permit number four zero one zero zero one dash one two zero two, discussion pursuant to thirty dash four dash seventy eight two. And there are no outside, there is no outside counsel for any of these matters.
Thank you. Per county council rules, we will take all of these items up during our second executive session on our agenda due to not having outside counsel. Next is item eight, citizens' input for items on the agenda not requiring a public hearing. Vice Chair Pugh, do you have anyone signed up to speak this evening?
No, ma'am. No one signed up to speak for that item.
Thank you. Item nine, citizens' input must pertain to Richland County matters not on the agenda. Items for which a public hearing is required or a public hearing has been scheduled cannot be addressed at this time. Vice Chair Pugh, do you have anyone to sign up this evening?
Madam Chair, no one signed up to speak for that item.
Thank you. Next, item ten, report of the county administrator. Administrator Brown, you're recognized.
Yes, ma'am, Madam Chair, members of council. For the first item under updates for consideration on general updates, I wanted to just take a moment to provide you with the update. As many of you are aware, there are times where we have-
Excuse me. I apologize. Madam Chair, I'm-
Yes.
I apologize, Administrator Brown, but I do have two citizens here, and I thought they signed up to speak. And I need to make sure that it's okay before we proceed. They did get here in time, but-
Okay. So they signed up to speak. We do have a public hearing. So are they speaking on a public hearing item, or was it under general citizens' input?
General citizens' input.
Okay.
It should have been under general citizens.
We could have a member of the clerk's team go check and make sure that there aren't any sheets left over there. We don't see anyone signed up to speak this evening.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Welcome. All right. We do not see you signed up, but if you would like to on item eight or nine, just please state which one. No problem. You want to come over to the mic, please, and we just need to know for item eight is for items on the agenda not requiring a public hearing, or is this for items not on the agenda that you'd be speaking about?
It's not on the agenda, yes.
Okay, so that would be item nine. And if you would start off, please, by stating your first, I'm sorry, Vice Chair Pugh.
Yes, ma'am. Did you state your- Can you state your name and address for the record, and you have two minutes to speak, ma'am?
Yes, sir. My name is Stephanie Anderson. My address is six seven five nine Cameron Creek Road in Hopkins, South Carolina, and I'm speaking on behalf of our residents that live behind me on Becker Road. My request is actually trying to get the road fixed because of ambulatory problems, getting emergency services and getting them help to fix an old- Basically short, it's an old farmland that was sold to these folks, and the road has never been taken care of since the day it was, everyone moved in. We have trouble getting ambulance services back there. We have trouble getting any kind of regular, normal postal service, garbage, whatever. Oftentimes, they have to drive through our yard just to get to their house, especially during the wintertime. And we're trying to get some help of trying to get that road turned over to the county as well. I understand it is considered a private road because someone owns it, but given the fact that most of them now are like me, not capable of walking around and standing up for very long periods of time, or not capable of handling a lot of things, I just decided to try to help them as best I can, or to see what I can do to assist them in getting things done for them. If you need any further details, some of you I have emailed. I probably can resend out more emails to give you a photograph of what everything looks like, but basically it's full of potholes. It was old farmland, so when it rains, it washes out. When it snows, they can't get up the main driveway. We have had trouble even with Public Works fussing at my mother, my mother and myself because we allow them to bring their garbage through our yard to put out on the main, the closest main highway. And we've met with a lot of restrictions. I've tried contacting the person that owns that little strip of road, but I never get a response back. They never answer phone calls. They don't answer emails. They don't answer mail. Thank y'all for listening to me for the short duration.
Thank you, ma'am. And for the record, Madam Chair, she did sign up to speak, but she signed up on the wrong sheet.
Do apologize.
Thank you. All right, so we will now go to item ten, report of the county administrator. Administrator Brown, you're recognized.
Yes, ma'am, Madam Chair, members of council. As many of you have experienced from time to time, you have individuals who work behind the scenes, who try to support the efforts of the organization. They come early, they stay late, they are on weekends, special activities, and they do it all with a very great attitude.
and they do it all with a very great attitude. Uh, they represent what I believe, uh, exemplifies the idea when we talked about, uh, our, uh, site statement that talked about servant leadership, integrity, empathy, governance, humility, uh, as well as transparency. And so tonight in the presence of this body, uh, I thought it would be fitting, uh, if we were able to honor, uh, Andy for his great work. So he, for him to come from behind the camera and come in front of the camera and receive this recognition.
Woo, Andy! He is everywhere. Yes!
All those people you take.
Yes.
If you would get a great photo with Andy, I think that would be awesome.
I would love a photo with Andy! Alright, come on. No, he's not either. He's got a challenge.
You have to put a foot smile to hold it for you.
You're gonna have to...
We'll hold the camera.
He's not leaving the camera for you.
I think so, I'm pretty short, so... Hold on, hold on, hold on.
You were the first, come on, challenge coin. We should do one.
Oh my god, you had it like...
Y'all want to do a phone one?
Yes.
Alright, do a phone one. Awesome.
Congrats on my speech!
I didn't make you speak though, anyway.
Andy, don't leave yet, I just gotta say one more thing.
He's already running.
I know, he's leaving. I know. Just so everybody was clear, uh, Administrator Brown launched a, a challenge coin for the county to really recognize folks that go above and beyond and exemplify the values of the county. And so, I mean truly, uh, Andy, you, uh, do definitely exemplify all those values and I have always enjoyed working with you and you know that. And y'all, there's nothing Andy won't do. Andy drove out to Northeast Columbia at 5:00 AM to take pictures when Publix did a ribbon cut and he was happy about it, y'all. Andy just... And I didn't think anybody was gonna come and he came all the way out there to take that picture. And he's just, he's just a, a good guy. So we appreciate all your work, Andy. You're recognized.
I just want to say, great job, Andy, and I'm enjoying watching you squirm up there while we started to talk about you.
Madam Chair?
You're recognized.
I know that we all have things to say, so I will echo everything that they said and just how you really go above and beyond. And I'm so proud that you are one of my constituents. And so the next time I see you walking in the neighborhood, I'm gonna see if you've got your coin with you.
Alright, I think you're safe to leave now. Thank you, Andy.
Alright, Madam Chair, the next item, uh, A2, uh, is an annual presentation. Uh, we have, uh, the chair, uh, who is here, uh, Mr. Kenneth Mullis from the Richland Soil and Water Conservation District, uh, to do the annual, uh, presentation. If you will recognize him?
You recognize, sir.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here before you today. I'm the chair of the Richland Soil and Water Conservation District. Um, conservation districts are subdivisions of state government which are created, were created by South Carolina law in 1937 as a part of the national response to the Dust Bowl. There are 46 conservation districts in South Carolina whose jurisdictions correspond to county boundaries. Districts exist in all 50 states and US territories, and they exist to develop and implement conservation activities within their jurisdictions. Here in Richland County, our conservation districts program target agricultural producers, teachers, students, and the general public. Districts receive financial support from federal, state, and local sources. The Richland District's cash operating budget is approximately $67,000 a year. We receive $20,000 a year from USDA. $25,000 a year from the South Carolina Department of Natural Resources, which is a non-recurring fund through the state legislature. And approximately $22,000 a year from grants and donations from individuals and businesses. We're also very grateful to receive in-kind staff support from Richland County. Richland County Council has provided staff support for the conservation district since at least the early 1970s. And you're currently sponsoring our work with three full-time equivalent staff positions in the Richland County Conservation Division. Thank you again. FY25 programs, uh, I'm here tonight to tell you how we have leveraged those staff positions to promote natural resource conservation in the 24, 25 fiscal year. In the past year, we hosted and supported three educational events promoting agricultural conservation prac- practices and farm bill programs for farmers and natural resource professionals. We also provided low-cost access to a no-till drill which was used to protect soil health on 406 acres of non-cultivated land. We awarded seven mini-grants totaling $6,000 to support conservation education in local schools. These grants supported projects such as hydroponic towers and school gardens. During this time, our staff also led seven professional development events for more than 121 educators across the state. During FY25, we provided 27 conservation programs on topics including soil health, water quality, and composting for more than 1,385 students in Richland County. We hosted a youth poster contest that received entries from 78 students at eight different schools. We also co-hosted the South Carolina Envirathon, a program that helps high school students become environmentally conscious, action-oriented adults. We serve as a community, a community adopt-a-stream hub and help local residents monitor and protect water quality. Adopt-a-Stream is a program through South Carolina Department of, of Environmental Services. We continued administrating the Richland County Ag and Art Tour, which y'all have supported this very well, we appreciate that. The 2025 tour attracted 6,185 visitors. Those came from, a lot of them from Richland County, some from around the state and some from out of state, just to come to Richland County for that Ag and Art Tour, so we're, we're proud of that. We had 17 agricultural tour sites in Blackwood, Chapin, Columbia, Eastover, Hopkins, and Windsboro. This program promotes grassroots economic development through agritourism and creates economic opportunities for local farmers and artists. Our seed sanctuary program promotes home gardening, food security, and pollinator conservation by providing vegetable, herb, and wildfire seeds to residents at no cost. FY25, we distributed more than 13,844 seed packets throughout two physical locations, pop-up events, and mail. In conclusion, we operate with a small staff and a small budget. Our model quality programs promote natural resource con- con- conservation here in Richland County as well as across the state. And we and our staff have received numerous recognitions for this work, some, some national rec- recognitions as well. At this time, I'd like to invite our commissioners, staff, and supporters in the, in the audience to stand. On that behalf of our team and Richland County residents impacted by your programs, thank you, Richland County Council, for providing staff support for our work. While the environmental challenge is a little different than what you saw in the Dust Bowl there, they're a lot more complicated now. And there, and there are a lot of, lot of things to be, a lot of things that we need to address. Our community faces, uh, more pressing issues than ever before. With your help, this Richland Soil and Water Conservation could make Richland County a better place to live, work, and play. Again, thank you for your time.
Thank you all for, uh, coming out tonight to the meeting. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, Madam Chair, the next item, uh, is really just an item that was provided to you, uh, in executive session before as a briefing. There's no action on that item. Um, that was just for your information, uh, as that is currently undergoing a, uh, procurement process. Uh, and then the final item is, uh, B, uh, for administrator's nomination. And under that item, we do have the impact fee ordinance and schedule. Uh, and if you, just bear with me a little bit, I'm gonna do a little bit of reading. Uh, but there is an action that I'm gonna ask you to, to take or to consider taking on this evening. So administration requests council discuss and prioritize the potential impact fee categories identified by the Tissue Advice, um, study that was done for inclusion in a solicitation scope of work as further expounded in the strategic and generative discussion, uh, in the section that I'm going to read to you now. Uh, and in that section, uh, it talks about in fiscal year 2026, County Council allocated funds to prepare an impact fee ordinance and fee schedule. However, uh, we need additional guidance to create a scope of work and vendor solicitation consistent with council's desires. Uh, as general background, typical impact fee ordinance adoption process involves funding, project scope, research and data analysis, draft ordinance and fee schedule, stakeholder and general engagement, final drafting, and then of course, three readings and a public hearing. Uh, council is being requested to, um, help, direct us in identifying specific areas that we need to provide data collection and analysis for, uh, related to the categories associated, uh, with the, um, as you see below in the list of sheriff, fire, EMS, solid waste, water, sewer, and transportation. Uh, stormwater is also a potential impact fee category we've discussed, however, uh, that, uh, currently, uh, we do not have enough details to really move forward with that, uh, type of impact fee. Uh, so in Richland County, you may be aware of this already, but we wanted to talk about, uh, why we did not list parks and recreation, school districts, and other facilities and equipment. And that's because school districts and parks and recreation are independent entities. Therefore, council could not control the use of funds if an impact fee were approved. A facilities and equipment impact fee would be under council's control and could potentially fund infrastructure and capital equipment, uh, that does not fall under previously mentioned categories while still meeting the provisions of South Carolina's Development Impact Fee Act. So as you go down through, um, that strategic generative, what you will see is that preliminary research analysis suggests that the greatest need, uh, is a stormwater impact fee, but as we described, we would need a master plan in order for us to, uh, pursue that. Secondarily, analysis suggests that water and sewer are the second most needed impact fee based on consultations with the former utilities director, uh, and analysis of the existing county infrastructure and comprehensive plan growth patterns. However, if the ongoing comprehensive plan updated process strongly encourage this compact growth, then council, uh, would adopt an aggressive growth policy that might not be a priority. So that just depends on what happens with the comprehensive plan, so that's why that's mentioned. Uh, EMS and emergency management, public safety, and fire rank third. Uh, as we know, there will always be a need for capital equipment and expanded facilities to serve the public in those capacities. And then fourth was ranked, facilities and equipment. Uh, then what you see from there is additional information, uh, but the categories that we're specifically asking you to provide direction on are, are listed there, uh, and because we want to make sure that you're aware that we do have funding, but the funding won't support all of the categories. So we basically need for you to prioritize, um, between the six potential categories that are listed, uh, which ones you will want us to focus on. So sheriff, fire, EMS, solid waste, water and sewer, and transportation. So, um, that's the request. The request is to give us priority list of what impact fees we would focus on, uh, so that we can see how far the $125,000, uh, that we have allocated would go. And based off of, uh, what we determine how much it costs, that will be the ones that we pursue first.
Thank you.
That would be an action item, if you so chose.
Thank you so much, um, Administrator Brown. Um, I, I did have a comment, says question, and then I'm looking to see if my colleagues want to discuss anything before we take action. Great, okay. Um, I guess Administrator Brown, I appreciate the, the reading of information and, um, providing, um, the, I guess, recommendation for us to provide rankings. Um, I do understand that the council cannot or does not control, um, school districts, you know, funds. However, I do think it's important to collaborate with them. I know the school district is interested in impact fees, um, and I will just s- speak for one that has talked to me about it, which is Richland School District Two, because of the growth that has taken place in Northeast. And so I'm aware where the county's limitations are, but I do think it would be smart for us to collaborate in the process because I think about the impact to residents. And if we, if we know we're interested in impact fees and they know they're interested in impact fees, just for the end user's sake, I think it would be best to figure out how to collaborate then, with them in a process that makes it understandable for the public, even though we're two separate entities. And so that may not be quite necessarily what you're asking for tonight as far as priority for us, but I would say it is a high priority recommendation for me that we do collaborate with Richland School District Two as we are moving forward with economic, uh, or potential impact fee to talk to them about how maybe we could do it at the same timeframe so that it is more palatable for residents. Administrator Weaver?
Okay, thank you. Um, thank you, Madam Chair. So, Mr. Brown, I'm gonna make sure I understand what you're asking. So you're asking us to prioritize the different possible fees, impact fees tonight, or is this something that goes back through committee, or?
It would not go back through committee. This is, uh, asking the council to decide of the, the categories that are listed there, which ones in priority order. If we can't afford to do all, a study for each one of them, what order would we do them in so we can make sure, um, that we, again, do first things first, if you will, uh, as we go down the list? So we, we, we don't believe that the study, the amount of money that we have, that we could do all six necessarily. Um, we believe that the consultation will be more than that, but if we have an idea of where we want to start and see how far we can get, that's what we want to, uh, to initial, get some initial guidance from.
Okay. Um, well, in, in hearing your remarks and talking about, you know, we got a penny tax, water sewer may not apply because the infrastructure reports not. I, I would just say, throw this out, I would think public safety, the first three, sheriff, fire, and EMS would be my priority, but I don't know, Madam Chair, do we need a motion for that or is just, this is just feedback tonight?
It is, uh, we definitely, uh, well, I don't say we need, Administrator Brown has requested a motion, it's up to this body, we can make a motion tonight, or if we need more time, we can do that as well. I think right now we're in discussion phase, and if someone, you know, feels so moved, that they can do that. Council went, okay. Newton?
Thank you. And Mr. Brown, you addressed part of my question, and I think the answer to this question will be that you don't know, but just in case. I understand that the feeling is that we haven't allocated sufficient funds to evaluate all of these. Is there a best guess estimate from staff where you think, we, we really feel confident we can look at three, or we feel like we can probably get four? Or are we really just, you just want, you just want the priorities because you have no idea where it's gonna run out and potentially it could run out after the first one?
Sure, let me, uh, consult with, uh, ACA Jensen, who's been kind of leading this up, to see if he had a, uh, an opportunity to speak with the general consultants to get an idea. So the team asked me to clarify, we believe that we budgeted for all of them, but depending on once you get into it, uh, that would maybe be the difference. Um, so that, that's why the prioritization was being asked for, uh, in case once they start looking in and saying, this would be more in these particular areas. So we're talking about the, again, as listed, sheriff, fire, EMS, solid waste, water and sewer, transportation, facilities, equipment. Again, right now in no order that I listed those in.
Sure.
That's just information. So not quite sure yet, believe we have enough money, but once they start doing the analysis...
Understood.
That would take them where they need to go.
And it depends on how much data we have. So that's helpful for me, from, from my perspective, based on the information that you gave tonight and just some questions that I have and a desire to, to have additional conversations with my colleagues beyond what would make sense to have up here right now. I would love for... I would love for us to to defer this, at least to give us, you know, to the next meeting to have additional conversation. I'm not making a motion for that because it's, I think it might be a non-debatable motion. But regardless, I want us to have all the additional conversation, but that's where I would leave.
And no action is required tonight, Madam Chair. I apologize for interrupting before you speaking. It's just an item being brought back before you gone through committee and now this would be a natural next step.
Appreciate that Administrator Brown. So next I have Livingston and then I see Councilwoman Cooper online, then Branham, and then English, okay.
Yeah, I think my preference probably be the first three too, but I'm not sure I'm ready to make a decision tonight because I need to know a little bit more about, you know, the impact of these and 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 what are the possibilities of what each one would generate in terms of funding, just a little bit more information before I decide on the order though, for sure.
Councilwoman Cooper?
Thank you. And so I definitely want to say that I agree with the chair. Chair Mackey, I think that we do need to figure out a way to create some type of formal collaboration as we move forward with addressing impact fees in the future. Maybe not, you know, I understand that this may not be the most appropriate time, but I I would like to think as we make decisions on council and broker economic deals that impact our schools. I think that it's important that although they are not an entity that we can't control their, you know, their their bud, their budget, or even their, probably I shouldn't say their budget, but we could, we can't control their actual tangible items and such. I think it's important that they know that we're here to support them through experiencing growth. That's my first point. And my second point would be that fully support the first, the top three when it comes to public safety. I think those are definitely priorities, but we can't, even though we do have a transportation penny, we, there's still so many other projects that may or may not. We may or may not be able to get to, so I would like for us to at least have something in place. And then lastly, you know, Mr. Brown mentioned that, you know, we cannot, we're not in a position to address stormwater drainage at this time, but that's a huge challenge, not just for District Seven, but throughout the county where we are experiencing a significant amount of flooding. And it's, and it's some of which can be directly connected to growth. And so we can have something in place and some funds in place that would support the stormwater drainage. And, you know, whether it's the runoff that's caused by the removal of trees or whatever the case may be. You know, I've had these conversations ongoing. It's a major concern. And if we are going to put an ordinance in place that could potentially address stormwater drainage, I definitely would like for us to at least not forget about that portion in the crafting of the ordinance so that, you know, in the days that comes and months to come, we can still go back and revisit it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Branham.
I wouldn't get into the details of of it all, but, you know, there's a lot of constraints that the law apply to impact fees that we definitely have to think about as we continue through this process. So one of the things that I look at, one of those constraints when I'm looking at prioritization is the fact that these fees can only be used to finance capital infrastructure and not to finance ongoing operations and or maintenance costs. So that's something that I would keep in mind as I'm looking at priorities. I I definitely would like to see transportation prioritized. And water and sewer, those are things that I can clearly see as being capital infrastructure ready when it comes to supporting growth. The 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 first responders are extremely important, but I'm looking at those as being more likely candidates for needing increases in operational costs. So we'll leave it at that. Thanks.
Councilwoman English?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Senator Brown, this this is the social worker in me talking, so please forgive me. I know that we have these six potential priority areas, but is there a way that it's not necessarily? Well, can it be prioritized like on any emergency situations? Like if this, if something's going on, then this contains precedence over that versus us listing which ones that we want to, to just, just stormwater. We have a 2020, if we have a 2015 again. Is there something that could move that sewer and water at the top? Or do we have to have a priority? Or or do you just need a list?
So that these type of impact fees are really referring to what happens when growth or development comes in. So when things are being built. And so in response to a natural disaster or some sort of issue happening with the environment, these fees, that's not what the utilization would be. This is what impact does this construction have on, you know, the the infrastructure for the county as it relates to water and sewer or transportation? Or as you as you list, see listed here, solid waste or the of the other public safety apparatuses? So a little bit different use, so it would not be, we could, it wouldn't be a prioritization as in what happens if an emergency happens? That would be a totally different set of of funding that you would have to address.
I'm thinking of when we have the steel and they have the pipes. We, they have some of the best pipes ever. If you use them, you have a 30-year extension on their pipes. If you use someone else, they might give you five to 10 years. So I guess that's what I'm asking, are we utilizing these things for the best or we just? I'm just looking forward, futuristic, that's all. That's the social worker in me, I'm sorry.
No need, no need to apologize.
Councilwoman Tricia?
Thank you. I was hesitant to to speak up, but I'll I'll try to do so briefly. Hopefully, if we do implement some impact fees, one of the things that the outcomes of that is that we'll be preventing some of these natural, these impacts that happen to our communities, weather events and and other. So hopefully, we're not maybe having less of those. I'll just say, one of the things that comes up for me when we think about these, and I I understand that this is potentially just way down the road. But I know that when the city implemented some stormwater impact fees, there were certain entities that saw much larger bills than they maybe had planned for or expected. And so I just want to think about that as we as we move forward, and I know that would be way after the study. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Aileen?
Madam Chair, I just need clarification. Are there other factors that went into the sheriff's office being listed as one of the six potential categories? I know you talked about the fact that we we don't control the school district spending of the money, but neither do we control sheriffs. So is there something else that makes that distinction?
I think with the sheriff's department as an example of a, it's a, it is a Richland County government entity. Whereas to, for example, school districts, whichever one, two or one or five, are really separate as it relates to the governance. So the Richland County Sheriff's Department as an example, he's an independent elected official, but he's an official of Richland County Government. And so whereas to, again, the school district as an example, has a separate board and all of that's really separate from Richland County Government. So in the in the, when the terms used here, it was more talking about you are unable to really have a guiding voice or or controlling voice in how those funds may be used, you know, if they're collected as a part of the impact fee. So it's really more speaking about that as it relates to the sheriff's department or internal county governmental department as compared to an external agency such as a school district or any other, you know, public entity that might be in Richland County that might be impacted or adjacent to Richland County Government, like the Recreation Commission, for example. So that's, you know, you ideally, you you could consider, well, what does this mean if construction is happening and our, the parks are being, you know, impacted? And so the Recreation Commission, who mainly handles that, would then be an entity associated with that. So we were just saying here, that's the reason why we're not really focusing on, you know, parks and and the school districts. Not because you can't, but because as a governmental entity, that's not our fundamental core wheelhouse. So these things here are things that are, that Richland County Government is responsible for in terms of transportation within Richland County, water and sewer, we have infrastructure that we provide for residents. Again, solid waste services that we provide through contractual means. And of course, then the Richland County Sheriff's Department, Columbia Richland Fire Partnership, and then EMS. So all of those things you actually all touch and 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 deal with directly as compared to maybe some what you would do with the school districts or the parks and recreation. So but as Chair Mackey mentioned, you certainly could collaborate and they may have interest, but we just wouldn't be able to drive that within our own purpose. It would have to be a collaboration, just as an example. Hopefully, that's more of a description than I provided in the documentation. Yes, ma'am.
Any further discussion?
Madam Chair?
You recognize?
I have a question and a motion. So first, a question, just to clarify what you're asking for us, because I'm going to move that we defer this item because clearly there's more discussion. When you're asking for ranking, I'm taking that to mean you want first, second, third, fourth, fifth, sixth. So even something is saying these are the top three don't really address. This is me making a statement, but it's a question. So that's, that's what I'm hearing, that even us just saying these top three might not be sufficient since we don't know where dollars are going. So again, you want a numerically rated list of our priorities for impact fees. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. And so with that, Madam Chair, I move that we defer this item. I would love to put a date in, but I would rather us have some discussion before I I make a motion that someone thinks a specific date that we need to rescind. So I, right now, I move to defer.
Second.
Motion is second for defer? Until, did you give a date?
No, I I didn't. And so that's something that during the discussion period, just wanted to see how much time the body feels that it needs because again, we're going to have to agree on a rated order, right?
Yes, I would just say that if you defer, you have to give a specific date as to when. Or, you know, or you can table the matter and bring it back up when you think it's appropriate. But if you defer, you have to give a specific date.
Other discussion?
I'm reading lips over here of people that are talking to me.
Would you like to defer to the next regular scheduled council meeting, which is November 4th?
How much time is?
That's two weeks. Two weeks, folks.
I'll, I'll move to defer to that, that November 4th date. Seeing faces. Well, this is a discussion period, so others can chime in.
I'd like to see us have more time to discuss it, so I would move that we table the matter.
That would be a substitute motion?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Madam Chair?
You recognize?
For a table, would that be something that the chair would then decide when the the sign of would come back on the agenda or that would be a administrator's nomination item and he would then?
I mean, it's my understanding somebody from the body has to bring it back up, right?
Yeah, if you table it, yes, somebody from the body has to bring it back up. Bring it back up.
Okay, so.
Or it could be me, or it could be you.
And we would need to do that potentially during the motion period of of a regularly scheduled meeting.
I'll ask the attorney to confirm that. I don't know if it has to be during the motion period, does it?
No, it doesn't have to be, it's, yeah, you don't have to make a motion to do it, just have to request that it be brought back up for discussion or for action.
Thank you.
Welcome. Any further discussion? Right?
Madam Chair, are we voting then on something? Because I'm sure lost.
I'm getting ready to call for the vote. If you're good.
Can you tell me again what we're voting on?
Yes, so Councilwoman Aileen made a substitute motion to table.
Okay, the substitute motion?
Yes.
Okay.
So the substitute motion was made and it was a second?
Okay.
So now?
This is to table?
To table.
Table, okay, I'm with you now. Very good.
Yes, sir.
Even though we have a motion and a second for a table discussion, at some point in time, we'll just call for a workshop for us to come together and have this discussion. Because what's going to happen is we're going to table this item and it's either going to disappear or when it comes back, staff, council members are going to still need more time to decide what order they want to prioritize these items in.
Madam Chair?
All right, did, did you ask the attorney a question or just a, or that was just a statement?
It was both.
Okay, attorney, right.
But just, no, I guess just for, just to let you know that if you bring it back up after you table it, the public still have to have some notice, so you will probably have to do it a prior meeting and then say for the next meeting or some other meeting, so the public has noticed that you're going to take action on this item. So it won't be the same exact meeting that you bring it back up because the public has to have noticed that you're going to take action.
I I totally understand that, but what my question is, is when are we going to get together to have discussion about these items? Because even if it's deferred, even if it was deferred, when are we going to get together? Are we going to do it on our own time, personal time together?
I should, I would say, I don't believe a separate workshop is needed. This item was discussed extensively in DNS Committee for many, I don't know how many months, but it was discussed for a long time. And then it was brought to the full body and voted on and and we have this budget amount. And so the briefing, I believe, is sufficient for folks to digest information. Administrator Brown and staff are available if folks have additional questions as they review this information. But I don't believe a word session is needed. So I understand your question about when folks will get together. I also don't think everyone here needs to talk with somebody else. Some folks just going to think about it with themselves and come back.
In that case, ma'am, I would like to encourage all my colleagues to attend to attend other committee meetings that have these type of items going forward. Thank you, ma'am.
Any further discussion? Madam Clark?
Branham?
Oh.
Pugh?
Yes.
Lero?
Yes.
Livingston? Tricia?
Oh.
Weaver?
Yes.
Cooper?
Yes.
Lean?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Madam Chair, do I need to withdraw my previous motion?
Okay, have the attorney.
I mean, it's it's irrelevant now, but it's, it was made.
It was left, yeah.
Right, well, a substitute motion was done, so that takes the place of your motion. Madam Chair, very briefly, very briefly, last item, this item does not require any action. It is information and it's brought to you because you as a body have voted to try to address positively affordable housing in Richland County. And part of that action that you took was you allocated $2 million towards the increase of housing supply. Earlier this afternoon, I had a chance through ACA Jensen to briefly update the committee that we've been made aware of an opportunity that comes by way of the Columbia Housing Authority. So they're in the process, as we understand it, of selling up to 152 houses to reduce costs and raise funds for future developments. As far as we understand, they are primarily three to four bedroom detached dwellings scattered in all districts. The only ones I'm pointing out here where they, we did not see any of those potentially is five and six. They are concentrated in Woodfield, Green Lakes, Quail Creek, and Fairfield Drive neighborhoods. Um, they are concentrated in Woodfield, Green Lakes, Quail Creek, and Fairfield Drive neighborhoods. Uh, the properties are in various states, uh, of disrepair. Some, uh, may require demolition, but most could potentially be preserved. Uh, the estimated cost between $50 and $100,000 per unit. Uh, as part of the HUD relinquishment, relinquishment process, the units must be sold at market rate or to qualifying home buyers at HUD designated affordable prices, which is to be determined. Uh, so, what does that mean for the potential, uh, supply, uh, increase for Richland County, Richland County? There's an opportunity for the county to utilize HUD funds and Affordable Housing Set Aside Funds to facilitate the renovation of a select group of the 152 properties, which would then, uh, be sold to qualifying individuals. The mechanics of the program, uh, are contemplated to be, for example, Columbia Housing would contribute, uh, a select portfolio of houses for rehabilitation. Richland County would contribute HUD and Affordable Housing Set Aside Funds. Columbia Housing or the county, whichever, uh, deemed to be, uh, best suited, could engage a third party to renovate the properties for qualifying buyers. Uh, and then, of course, uh, Columbia, uh, Housing sells the rehabilitated properties to qualified buyers at a below market value with the de-restriction placed on the property. Uh, in this, in this particular example you have, is the county would not take ownership of any of the properties or perform any of the work. Uh, the home buyers could also potentially qualify for the county's HUD down payment assistance program if the dwelling meets HUD standards. So, there's an opportunity across a couple of different, um, funding sources and, and projects that this could help move forward with the housing supply initiative that this council has talked about. Uh, our staff is currently pl- planning on being in a work session on October 30th with Columbia Housing to go through more of the properties and identify potential priority houses and work through some additional process details. So, no actions required at all. Just wanted you to know that you had given us a charge to try to figure out how to increase supply. This opportunity may be one that allows that amongst other opportunities. So, we wanted you to have that information and be available, uh, uh, to be aware of that in case you heard it from some other sources. So, thank you, Madam Chair. That does conclude my report, short of any question that you all may have.
Thank you for that update. Any additional questions for Administrator Brown? Hearing none. Report of the Clerk of Council. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, I have two items to report tonight. On, um, October the 22nd, at 6:00 PM, District 2 will be holding a town hall meeting at the Upper Richland Community Center to discuss a rezoning on Montgomery Road. Anyone who would like to attend the meeting is welcome to attend. Um, also, on Friday, October the 24th, District 3, 10, District 3, 8, and 10 will be holding a, um, movie night in conjunction with Surf and Connect. This one is specifically for the Brookfield community. This area is, um, divided in three different districts. So, all three council members would like to meet the Brookfield community and inviting them to specifically attend this event. And it will start at 5:30 PM with a meet and greet with all three council members. If anyone has any questions, they can follow us on, uh, our social media or look on our website for more information. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next is Report of the Chair. I don't have any items to report this evening. Next is Item 13, Open and Closed Public Hearings. 13A, Authorizing the Expansion of the Boundaries of the I-77 Corridor Regional Industrial Park, jointly developed with Fairfield County, to include certain property located in Richland County. The execution and delivery of an infrastructure credit agreement to provide for infrastructure credits to Vulcan Development LLC and other related matters. This public hearing is now open. Vice Chair Pugh, we have anyone signed to speak this evening?
Madam Chair, no one signed up to speak for that item.
This public hearing is now closed. Next is 13B, Authorizing the Sale and Transfer of Certain Real Property Owned by Richland County and Located in the Carolina Pines Industrial Park to Magnus Holdings LLC and other matters related thereto. This public hearing is now open. Vice Chair Pugh, we have anyone to sign up this evening?
Madam Chair, no one signed up to speak for that item.
This public hearing is now closed. Next is Item 14, Approval of Consent Items. 14A, Case Number 25-023MA, Charles M. Fitz Henry, PDD to GC. 11.98 acres, 2,000 Clemson Road, TMS number R20200-02-07, third reading. This is in District 8. I entertain a motion.
Madam Chair.
You recognize?
Approve, uh, 14A.
Second. Motion approved for Items 14A through D. Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Livingston? Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Cooper?
Yes.
Lean?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Madam Chair?
Recognize?
Reconsideration for Items 14A and B. And that's it, that was a third reading.
Second.
Motion is second for reconsideration of 14A and B. Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
Oh.
Pugh?
Nope.
Little?
Oh.
Livingston?
Oh.
Teresa?
Oh.
Weaver?
Oh.
Cooper?
No.
Lean?
Oh.
Mackey?
Oh.
English?
Oh.
Newton?
Oh.
Motion fails.
Next item 15, Third Reading Item 15A, Case Number 25-027MA, Gilbert E. Blizzard, R5 to R6, 8.16 acres, 1838 Bluff Road, 1508 Joe Lewis Drive, 1822 Bluff Road. TMS number R11115-05-05, R11116-04-18, and R11116-04-09, District 10. I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, move to approve.
Second.
Motion is second for approval, any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Little? Livingston? Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Cooper?
Yes.
Lean?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Your move for reconsider-
Second.
Motion is second for reconsideration. Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
Oh.
Pugh?
Oh.
Little?
No.
Livingston?
Oh.
Teresa?
Oh.
Weaver?
Oh.
Cooper?
No.
Lean?
No.
Mackey?
Oh.
English?
Oh.
Newton?
Oh.
Motion fails.
Next is Item 15, uh, B, Authorizing the Sale and Transfer of Certain Real Property Owned by Richland County and Located in the Carolina Pines Industrial Park to Magnus Holdings LLC and other matters related thereto.
Move to approve.
Motion is second for approval. Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Cooper?
Yes.
Alin?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Second.
Yes.
I can still stand?
Yes.
Motion is second for reconsideration on 15B. Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
No.
Pugh?
No.
Little?
No.
Livingston?
Oh.
Teresa?
Oh.
Weaver?
Oh.
Cooper?
No.
Alin?
No.
Mackey?
Oh.
English?
Oh.
Newton? Motion fails.
Next is Item, uh, 16, Second Reading Item 16A, and Ordinance Extending the Temporary Moratorium on Application, Acceptance, Permit Issuance, Approvals, and Other Authorizations for Demolition, New Construction, Rezoning, and Rehabilitation in the Olympia Mill Village area of unincorporated Richland County, and Invoking the Application of the Pending Ordinance Doctrine.
Madam Chair?
You recognize?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion is second for approval, any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
No.
Pugh?
Yes.
Little? Livingston?
Oh.
Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Cooper?
Yes.
Alin?
Yes.
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next is 16B, An Ordinance Authorizing an Easement to Dominion Energy South Carolina Incorporated to Construct, Extend, Replace, Relocate, Perpetually Maintain and Operate an Overhead or Underground Electric Line or Lines Located on Property Owned by Richland County at 2061 American Italian Way, and is, and as is more fully described herein. Entertained a motion.
Approve.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Cooper?
Yes.
Alin?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next is 16C, Authorizing the Expansion of the Boundaries of the I-77 Corridor Regional Industrial Park, jointly developed with Fairfield County, to include certain property located in Richland County. The execution and delivery of public infrastructure credit agreement to provide for public infrastructure credits to accompany identified as Project Senate and other related matters.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I move to approve.
Second.
Motion is second for approval. Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Little? Livingston? Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Cooper?
Yes.
Alin?
Yes.
Mackey?
I accuse myself due to my parent comp- applicant.
Noted. English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next is 17, First Reading Item 17A, An Ordinance Authorizing the Conveyance by quitclaim deed of all right, title, and interest the County of Richland may have, if any, in certain real property described as Road R slash W Relocation Pla- Parcel B in the City of Columbia, County of Richland, to Prisma Health Midlands, also known as Palmetto Health Alliance. I'll entertain a motion.
Excuse me, ma'am, I'm so late.
Second.
Motion is second for approval, any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Cooper?
Yes.
Alin?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next is Item 18, Report of the Economic Development Committee. Councilman Livingston, you recognize?
Madam Chair, Item 18A, Committing, um, to negotiate a fee in lieu of ever-long taxes agreement between Richland County and Project Price, identifying the project and other matters related thereof. The committee's recommendation is for approval. This is a, um, just an inducive resolution for this particular project for, to allow this investment to just continue to make another, you know, investments. Then, the committee's recommendation was, was for approval.
Heard the committee's recommendation, does not require a second. Is there any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Cooper?
Yes.
Lean?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Listen.
Madam Chair, Item 18B, Authorizing Execution and Delivery of a Fee in Lieu of Ever-Long Taxes and Insent Agreement by and between Richland County, South Carolina, and Project Price to Provide for Payment or Fee in Lieu of Taxes, Authorizing Certain Infrastructure Credit and Other Related Matters thereof, and the committee's recommendation is for approval.
Heard this committee's recommendation, does not require a second, is there any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Little? Livingston?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Cooper?
Yes.
Alin?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Listen.
Madam Chair, Item 18C, Authorizing Extension of the Investment Period Madam Chair, item eighteen C authorize extension of the investment period of their fee in lieu of ever learned taxes agreement by between Western House Electric Company and L um company LLC and Richland County, the committee's recommendation was for approval.
Heard the committee's recommendation. It does not require a second, is there any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Lero?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Terracio?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Cooper?
Yes.
Lean?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Madam Chair, that completes the report of the Econ Development Committee.
Thank you, and next is item nineteen. Other items, you recognize?
Thank you. Move to approve items nineteen A through F. Second.
Uh motion for approval and uh second of nineteen A through F, any discussion?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I I misspoke. I meant items A through H like hotel.
But the second of who made the second or can somebody please?
Yes, sorry, I'm behind on that, yes.
Okay.
I'll accept that.
Thank you. The motion and a second for approval of nineteen A through H. Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Lero? Livingston? Terracio?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Cooper?
Yes.
Lean?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton? Motion approved.
Madam Chair?
Recognize.
I like the move for reconsideration.
Second. Uh just to clarify, is this reconsideration nineteen A through H?
Yes ma'am.
Alright. Any discussion? Motion and a second for item nineteen A through H. Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
Oh.
Pugh?
Oh.
Lero?
No.
Livingston?
Oh.
Terracio?
Oh.
Weaver?
Oh.
Cooper?
No.
Lean? Mackey?
Oh.
English?
Oh.
Newton?
Oh.
Motion fails.
Thank you. We're now at our second executive session of the agenda and we'll go back to uh item seven. Uh Attorney Wright?
Yes, Madam Chair, we have those four matters in seven A, B and C and D. A, C and D are pursuant to South Carolina Code, South Carolina Code thirty dash four dash seventy eight two and B is pursuant to thirty dash four dash seventy A one.
Thank you, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive sessions for items uh seven A through D.
Second.
Motion and second to enter executive session for A through D. Seven A through D. Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Lero? Livingston? Terracio?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Cooper?
Yes.
Lean?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton? Motion approved.
Now an executive session.
Thank you.
Out of executive session.
We don't have our.
Second.
I'm sorry. I, I went too fast.
Draw your motion.
I withdraw my motion.
That was a practice. That was a practice run.
Move to come out of execu- executive session?
Second.
Second to come out of executive session, madam.
Brenham?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Terisha?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Cooper?
Yes.
Aline?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Uh, please let the record reflect that we went into executive session to discuss items seven A through D and no action was taken.
Adam Chair.
You're recognized.
Um, I've got a motion as to item seven D that, um, related to the S C D E S consent agreement, um, regarding a permit that relates to a specific piece of property. Uh, but before I make the motion, I did want to ask the county administrator if he could confirm. We were aware that, uh, a piece of property, uh, near this property is up for rezoning, had recently come before the county's planning commission and will be coming in front of county council at a zoning public hearing. Is this permit related to that piece of property that's up for rezoning?
No, sir. This is a different piece of property.
Okay. All right. So, uh, the motion is to authorize the administrator to enter into execute the consent agreement with S C D E S regarding permit number four zero one zero zero one dash one two zero two.
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Pugh?
No.
Little? Livingston?
Yes.
Terisha?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Cooper? Aline?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Reconsideration?
Yes, please, Madam Chair.
Of to reconsider.
Motion and second for reconsideration. Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
No.
Pugh?
No.
Little? Livingston? Terisha?
No.
Weaver?
No.
Cooper? Aline?
No.
Mackey?
No.
English?
No.
Newton?
No.
Motion fails.
Adam Chair, when you're ready, I would like to make-
I am ready when you are.
I'd like to make a motion on item seven B. I would like to make a motion to authorize the chair of the employee evaluation committee to move forward with the 2025 county adminis- administrator evaluation as discussed in executive session.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Terisha?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Cooper? Aline?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
All right. Next, we are at, uh, at, well, um- All right. Next, we are at, well, yes, sir, Attorney Wright.
Is there a motion regarding 7C?
I move to allow the Richland County Library or property acquisition, is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
9019 Garners Ferry Road, TMS number R21800-04-21.
Second. Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Livingston? Terraceau?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Cooper? Aline?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Does that item require reconsideration?
No, since it's not final at this point.
Got it. Thank you.
Any else, Attorney Wright, regarding executive session?
No, ma'am.
All right. We're now at item 21, which is motion period. We do have one motion tonight. 21A, based upon a recent, excuse me, based upon a request properly applied for and vetted by the appropriate officials to ensure state statutory and county code requirements were met, I move to allocate $100,000 from the hospitality tax fund balance to the Midlands Authority for Conventions, Sports, and Tourism for the 2026 Colonial Life Charity Classic PGA Golf Tournament. This motion was submitted by Councilman Don Weaver and myself, and I would like to just give just brief information for this motion. The Corn Ferry Colonial Life Charity Golf Tournament is a PGA golf tournament. For those that may remember, over the summer back in around May, there was an announcement made at Wood Creek Golf Course in Northeast Columbia that the PGA had selected Columbia for a five-year commitment to bring the Corn Ferry Golf Tournament to our area. This is a PGA tour that had previously been in another state, and they looked at Columbia and the Grove and what it has here, and they wanted to find another state to bring it to for five years, and they selected Columbia. The golf tournament is expected to bring up to 10,000 visitors over a week-long period, so from May 11th to the 17th of 2026 is where the tournament will be held.
Madam Chair?
Sure.
Can I add one comment? First, I'd like to thank you for your leadership on this issue and bringing this to the forefront. And the second thing very quickly is to say, I think when the General Assembly passed H-tax legislation, this is exactly the kind of event they had in mind, because it's going to bring a lot of golf professionals, a lot of media to the Midlands. It's going to do great for Richland County, so I would encourage my colleagues to vote for it.
Thank you, sir. This item does not need to go to any committee. It can take action upon tonight, so I'd like to make a motion for approval of 21A.
Second.
Second. Motion and second. Discussion? Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Terraceau?
O.
Weaver?
Yes.
Cooper?
Yes.
Aline?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Madam Chair, reconsiderate.
Second.
Motion and second for reconsideration. Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
O.
Pew?
O.
Little?
O.
Livingston?
O.
Terraceau?
O.
Weaver?
O.
Cooper?
No.
Aline?
Mackey?
O.
English?
O.
Newton?
O.
Motion fails.
Thank you. Item 22?
Move for adjournment.
I can.
Motion and second for adjournment. Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Livingston? Terraceau?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Cooper?
Yes.
Aline?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Eating a jern.